All right, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I'd like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised our city council meetings will broadcast on television on Comcast Channel 99 and rebroadcast on WMGJ radio. This meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Ivana Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilman Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Here.
Eckles?
Here.
Billingsley?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask President Williams to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Father, as we begin today's meeting in the midst of this holiday season, Father, we ask that you will keep us in remembrance of the reason for this season, Father. We thank you for the ultimate sacrifice, Father. We thank you for your son, Jesus, and the example that he set, Father God. We ask that you will touch and cover, Father God, every family, Father, that's celebrating during this season, Father God. Touch the hearts, Father God, that we will live the true spirit and meaning of Christmas, Father. And we thank you, Father, for the opportunity to share, to share love, Father, and share giving. Father, thank you for each and every elected official that's here. Thank you for every participant, Father God. Bless us all and keep us, Father God. Grant us with the wisdom to make wise decisions, Father, in this day. Father God, we ask it all in your son, Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Public Safety Committee work session and city council meetings held on December 12th.
So moved.
Second.
I'm sorry, I left off a part. And the Public Safety Committee meetings held on December 14th.
So moved.
Second.
All right, Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of December 8th through 14th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamations, Mayor?
Yes.
All right, unfinished business. Item number 8A is an ordinance amending City Code Section 86-1 regarding definition of abandoned vehicles. This ordinance was presented last week at first reading. It will change the definition for abandoned vehicles to the one found in Section 302-8 of the 2015 International Property Maintenance Code. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Yes, as I understand it, there's vehicles that are tagged and running.
Okay, any additional discussion?
Yes, I've had some calls for people that's very disturbed about this because, you know, it's just a lot of circumstances and I don't think we have that many vehicles. That's, that's a problem, in my opinion, now. But they've, they've talked to me very seriously and I've got blessed out real good about this, so...
You don't pass it anyway.
Well, that's true too, but I'm gonna vote against it, though.
As a point of clarity, title, gotta have a title to get it tagged. So by having this say tagged and running, that pretty well covers that.
Okay. All right, is there any additional discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
I oppose.
We have one no. Motion carries to adopt.
All right, we have five hearings today regarding assessing liens for demolition work that has already been performed. This is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing, allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution assessing nuisance, nuisance abatement liens in the amount of $2,866.40 against property at 1811 Adams Street in District 5. The last known owner is James Janes. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Sir, if you would, for, for the record, if you'll give us your name and address, please?
James Janes. I live at 3497 Bernard Street.
Make sure your microphone's on.
James Janes. I live at 3497 Bernard Street in Hoekstra. I do own that property. Uh, I did pay taxes on it and I bought it as a, as an investment. And the last owner, from what I understand, was given all the warnings for the abatement. I was not given any warnings for the abatement. They were sent to the wrong address. After it was learned that he no longer has that property, I was sent the warning for the, for the lien for $2,800. The house was demolished illegally without my knowledge, without giving any warning of abatement, of the, without giving the 60-day offer to, the warning to fix it. What I would like is, the house was assessed for $14,700. I would actually like to be given the, the difference. You can, the 3,000, if it costs $3,000 to demolish it, that's fine, but I would like to be given the $11,000 that I lost because I was given no warning. Not trying to be rude or do anything, but I just lost everything.
Thank you. All right, is there, is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? Okay, the Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Okay, what I, what I would encourage, what I would encourage you to do, sir, is to, if you have a, a specific claim as relates to the process, I would encourage you to reach out to the legal department and engage them in some discussion about proper notice and, and all of those things so that you can get a better understanding of how that process works.
But is there not, when I read the, the minutes and you say there's the abatement with a 60-day, 60-day warning and then it's demolished afterward?
Yeah.
How do you know the warning, but it's no?
Yeah, the most, the most appropriate and the best forum for you is gonna be in, in, an offline discussion with the legal department. That's gonna be the best forum for you as, as it relates to this, 'cause now you, you're delving into more of a, of a legal matter and a legal explanation, 'cause you're challenging the legal process, so...
But can the council go forward with putting the lien against me? I'm confused.
Well, you need, we'll talk afterwards. Obviously, you didn't check title before you bought the property, you just paid taxes for it.
There was title, there was a title work done on it.
There was title work, then you, then you would have noticed that there was a notice, there was a notice of nuisance abatement. So whoever did your title work obviously missed it.
If it was done over two years ago?
So, because we have a title opinion done before we get started and, and before that is done, we have a notice of nuisance abatement and that's all filed of record. Okay? Now, any further discussions, we'll, we'll talk later, okay?
All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is for 1513 Fillmore Avenue in District 5. The amount is $2,491.40 and the last known owners are Benjamin H. Covington, Rebecca E. Mueborn, and Verleen Walker. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Please give us your name and address, please.
My name is Melody Hammonds. I live in Jackson, Alabama. Verleen Walker is my father. He lives next door to that property at 1515. The property is previously owned by Benjamin and Rebecca. My father did not obtain the property. We noticed it on a tax sale list for the state of Alabama and he obtained it in May of this year. At that time, there was no, nothing on the state website regarding a nuisance lien, anything. He went up to the county office as directed and paid the taxes that was due for the property. So at the time of the nuisance, he did not own the property. His name is Verleen Walker, if that helps you. We ask that, that it to be either tabled, taken under consideration, or forgiven because he did not know of that and he was no part of the nuisance.
Okay, all right, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
I'd like to know how this would be handled as far as, I mean, we adopt this and we approve this, so that means that it will go forward, but in, in their challenge, how would we handle, is that still a legal matter? Would that become a legal matter?
It does become a legal matter. What happens is this lien will attach to the property. It will not attach to Mr. Walker. It doesn't attach to him personally. It attaches to the property. Now, what Mr. Walker did was after the fact, he, he, he paid the back taxes on the property to acquire, to acquire a tax interest in the property. Now, in the future, if Mr. Walker, say, wanted to, say, after three years, he wants to acquire title to the property, clearly, he would have to deal with our lien. But as, as Councilwoman knows, the city, in, in circumstances like that, the city does talk to and negotiate with people who want to compromise our lien because I think the city's interest is getting property backs on, back on the tax rolls. And here, it looks like we have a neighbor who is interested in taking care of the property and mowing the grass, et cetera. So, you know, if, if it becomes a, an issue where you want to acquire title of the property, like after three years, you have a redemption period from the state for the taxes, then I would suggest at that point, you contact the city clerk to start the negotiations and, and, and we'll get it resolved.
May I ask a question, please?
Go ahead.
Could we ask that it be tabled until it be discussed and still passing the resolution that this amount is owed on the property?
That's always a possibility.
It's always been going down, isn't it?
Yeah. So, is there any, any additional discussion? All right, Clerk, will you take the vote?
The motion and second that we have is to adopt the resolution. Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is for 33 Sandusky Lane in District 6. The amount is $3,716.40 and the last known owners are Matthew McCoy and the state of Alabama. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution?
Eleven.
My apologies. My apologies. Our, our next public hearing is for 1901 Jefferson Street in District 5. The amount is $3,691.40 and the last known owners are Teresa Gilli and the state of Alabama. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion here? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is for 33 Sandusky Lane in District 6. The amount is $3,716.40 and the last known owners are Matthew McCoy and the state of Alabama. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our final public hearing is for 32 West Wilkinson Avenue in District 7. The amount is $3,916.40 and the last known owners are the state of Alabama, American General Financial, and Linda Womack. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? Okay, the Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay, new business, is there any new business? Department reports, committees, boards. Ms. Herring, if you wanna come up?
Good morning.
On Tuesday, June 27, 2017, a regional job fair was held here in Gaston at 210s at the tracks. There were over 800 job seekers and over 100 employers at that four-hour event, which Governor K. Ivey did attend. The Gaston Career Center led the job fair with assistance from Abertville, Anniston, Rowan Oak, and Talladega Centers. The mobile career center bus was at the event to assist job seekers. The city of Gaston provided shovel services to help parking and had a local restaurant provide barbecue sandwiches for the job seekers, staff, and employers after the event. Employment statistics I'm going to provide to you, reported from the Alabama Department of Labor. Since the regional two job fair, which was held on June 27, 2017, our unemployment rate has steadily declined. June 2017, we reported 5.20 percent. July, 4.90 percent. August, 4.30 percent. September, 3.4. And here, the last one in October, is at 3.6 percent. And those are for Etowah County and Gaston metropolitan area. And also, the state rate is also, is at 3.6, which is at a historic low at this time. Now, we were unable to obtain employment data from the employers, but as you can see, employment did take place because of those declines. October 2016, rate at 3.6, 3, 2,797 persons were unemployed. October 2017, rate at 3.6, 1,584 persons unemployed. That is a 3.3 percent in one year and 1,213 persons employed.
All right, Katrina, you mind telling, telling the folks who you are?
Okay, I'm Katrina Herring and I manage the Gaston Career Center.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you for that information.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much.
So, I think, I do appreciate her coming and I think it's, it's just really important to note the significance of that number that she gave for the month of October, 3.6 percent. There are many that believe that 3.5 percent represents the full employment number. And so, and, and that varies depending on who you ask, you know, that number, some, some believe that 4 percent is full employment, some believe that, you know, 3 percent is full employment. But, but, but the point there and the theme there should, should be clear, that, you know, we've, in a 12-month span, the state and in particular this area has moved from roughly 6 percent unemployment to about 3.6 percent unemployment, which is, so you've essentially cut that number in half. And that's significant. It's attributable, of course, to the activity and the need for employers to hire in this area. I think it's very, it's, it's very much indicative of, believe it or not, a lot of the expansion activity that's taking place about an hour and 15 minutes down the road in Mercedes, because many of our suppliers in the area are supporting Mercedes as an OEM. Also Honda has engaged in some expansion activity during that time, which is driving some of the growth as well, so... And, and again, trust me when I tell you, it's nothing that these politicians up here are doing, and that includes me. It's, it's what, it's what industry and companies are doing to grow our economy and to hire. And, and what we've done, if anything, is to support and augment that activity. So again, it's, you know, and I, and I wanna take the opportunity to, to really, you know, sing the praises of my dear friend Fitzgerald Washington and what he's done across the state in terms of these regional job fairs. He's done those for the last year. He's been in, he's been in that appointment for two years, but he's done those for the last year across the state and he did us the favor and privilege of appointing the Gaston as the location for this year's District, District 2, or Region 2, I'm sorry, job fair. So, so a lot of good news from that and Katrina, I appreciate you making yourself available and we wanna thank Councilman Worthy for his continued efforts with the annual job fair activity, so...
Can I ask a quick question? You didn't happen to see how many jobs we have available as of maybe last week here in this area, within a 25-mile radius?
Were you asking this in the area or in Gaston?
In Gaston, no.
In Gaston, I was around freezing your dogs up last week, just in this area, of course, that increases depending on how it starts with you there.
Thank you.
All right, remarks by the Mayor and Council? Mayor?
Yeah, I want to say we had a sad news this morning. Mr. Fred Singleton passed away sometime last night. Longtime resident here. I would call him a goodwill ambassador and just a person who never met strangers, did a lot of civic work over the years, actually played softball with him. First year, I played 16 and he was a pitcher for in the adult league and always been a friend. He's also been over the Airport Authority and he's well-known throughout, not only the state, but even as far as Washington. He has friends up there and it's really sad and I hope you keep the family and, and all they'll be announcing all the arrangements, but in, in your thoughts and prayers.
Councilwoman Toles?
My condolences also. I met him when we were used to end up at Fitness Plus at 4:30 in the morning exercising, so I got to know him then. Another thing that I'd like to make an announcement, the city now has a application for appointments to city boards and commissions and all you have to do is to go to the city website or you can call City Clerk Ivana Nelson. I'd like to thank Eric Wright and Ivana Nelson for designing and developing, helping to develop this form. Doesn't change our process, but we just like to find out who's interested in serving on various boards. So the application is just a simple application and on the back of the application, if you pull it off the website, it has all the various boards that you may have an interest in. So if you're interested in serving on city board or commission, go to our website and fill out an application and submit it to the city clerk.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Toles. And as I mentioned upstairs, she's to be commended, 'cause she's been working on that for some time and I do appreciate that. Mr. Eckles?
Fred was a real friend of mine for a long time. We're gonna miss him. He's done an excellent job out there at the airport and it's strictly because of, like the mayor says, he's a people person. He was friendly to all the people that mattered and we've gotten some big money out of, because of him, to work on that airport. The things that he put out there since he became a director is really phenomenal. So we're gonna miss him. Gonna miss him real bad, I am.
Thank you, Mr. Eckles. Councilman Worthy?
Yes, and my condolences also, but also to the other families in the city that's in bereavement right now. We have several people to pass here lately, so we wanna think about all the families. And I also wanna talk about the Public Safety Committee meeting we had, the public forum on this past Thursday. We had a lot of people to show up and I wanna continue talking about this drug epidemic 'cause we got to try to do something. We're having too many people to OD. But, and I understand that it's gonna be up to that individual to decide whether they wanna get clean or not, but we're gonna have to give these people hope. So we're gonna have to continue in trying to work with the families also, because the families go through a lot. And if you didn't make it to the meeting and you wanna help, you can call the city clerk's office and we will add you to the email list. We compile an email list and names and phone numbers and we also are still in the process of typing up the minutes and we're gonna put that on the website. So, just keep thinking about the city and what the people are going through and pray and we're also gonna continue. And the main thing come out of the meeting was prevention. We gotta get in the schools at an early age and try to prevent these young people from even starting drugs, because you, when you, once you do, you're on a downhill cycle. So we're gonna continue doing all we can to bring awareness to this problem and continue trying to help solve it. Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to all.
Councilman Billingsley?
Yes, I'd also like to offer my condolences to the family of Fred Singleton. And also, we lost another employee for the city of Gaston, Lyndon Woodall. Lyndon Woodall, if you met him, you, you had to like him because he was a people person and, and our city's gonna miss him tremendously because he was, he was a great ambassador for the city of Gaston. And I've known him for about 30-some years and I've called bar with him all over the state and he was just a good, good guy. So I wanna wish his family a, my condolences to them. Thank you.
Councilman Cannon?
I just wanna echo what Billy just said about Fred and also Lyndon. Both of them were good guys. They both had the city at heart. Every time you'd see Fred, he was always talking about the airport out there. Every time you'd run into Lyndon, all he would talk about is park recreation, what he was doing, what they was doing up there. And like, everybody said, those two guys are really gonna be missed.
Thank you, Councilman Cannon. Councilman Reed?
Yeah, I think Fred's passing kinda came as a shock to me this morning. Fred was one of the first people I met in 1959 when I came to Gaston. Lot of awards, but I think the biggest that we shared in was when we inducted him into the Hall, the Patriots Hall of Honor, right here, this year. Absolutely. He's a great guy. I'm gonna miss him. I know the family and everybody... I know the family and everybody else will. One light note, in nineteen sixty and a few after that, we used to sit at a round table at Amelia's Restaurant, and we swapped stories back and forth. The biggest thing between Fred and myself, I always, we hadn't bonded, I always buy my ties at Goodwill and Salvation Army, and Fred, as late as a month ago, checked my tie to be sure that I was still on go. He was big on my Salvation Army ties, anyway. But listen, y'all, I hope you have a safe and a Merry Christmas, and a Happy New Year too.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Reed. I'll, I'll echo the sentiments, again, for, for Mr. Woodall's family. We do offer up condolences and we, I mean, again, remembrance of his, his service and commitment, and of course, Fred Singleton. I, I knew Fred a lot more intimately, and, and I can tell you that dating back to, to when I first came home from college, it was Fred who entertained me in the mayor, in mayor's office at that time, and introduced me to city government to some degree, and somewhat took me under his wing, and, and it was Fred that also helped me garner a promotion at one point in my professional career. We were looking for some city support at the time, that I was, I had taken on my first manager role, and we were looking for some city support, and, and I was sitting around the, the table with a group of executives, people who were, who made a lot more money than me and who were a whole lot smarter. And, and I said, you know, I, I can actually get us into the mayor's office if you need it. And, and I called, and at that time, the mayor wasn't available or just didn't wanna be available, I don't know what the case was, but, but Fred made himself available. And he sat down with me, and I looked like a hero, and I did absolutely nothing. But Fred was just a good man. As, as Mr. Eccles mentioned, he was well-known, not just in this city, but across the country. Fred was, as, as many of you know, he played for the, the great Bear Bryant at the University of Alabama, so I always enjoyed listening to him talk about those old Bear Bryant stories. You know, that was, that was always important. So, again, our condolences to his family, he will be greatly missed. We have, you know, in this year, we've lost some great people, and Fred definitely fits in that number, so we will miss him. Again, just to echo the sentiment and the point that was made, I do wanna commend Councilman Worthy on the event that he hosted and put on earlier in the week. It is important. I think we've demonstrated through, whether it's, whether you're talking about the topic of poverty, youth initiatives, diversity and inclusion, substance abuse, education, we've had some meaningful conversations over the last eight to ten years, and there's been some good action items to come out of those discussions. And so for the naysayer out there who will say, who will say talk is cheap, I will agree with you, if that's all we're doing is talking. But I think, again, those discussions have the tendency, and typically do, lead to some very meaningful outcomes. So I wanna encourage him and anybody else who wants to continue the discussion on any meaningful topic for the community to continue it, because again, there are some good actionable items that do come out of that on occasion. Okay? If there's nothing else, and, I have a couple more announcements, my apologies. Due to the upcoming Christmas holidays, the city council will not meet on Tuesday, December twenty-sixth, so there will be no meeting next week. So Merry Christmas in advance, and, and Happy Holidays to everyone. The regularly, the regular schedule will resume on Tuesday, January second. So again, there won't be a meeting on the twenty-sixth, but there will be a meeting on January second. Garbage schedule for Christmas week, Monday's route will be collected on Tuesday, December twenty-sixth. Tuesday's route will be collected on Wednesday, and the landfill will be closed Monday and Tuesday. And then, of course, the garbage schedule for the week of New Year's, or for the New Year holiday, Monday's route will be collected on Tuesday, January second, and Tuesday's route will be collected on Wednesday, and the landfill will be closed on Monday. Okay? If there's no other, if there's no other business, I entertain a motion that we adjourn.